So maybe you can move the board recognition part up to the new board reorganization.
Okay, where are we? So we're gonna need a motion to do that. What are we gonna do now? We're gonna move the board recognition up to the head end.
To the right back. I'm the board of the consent.
Yeah, yeah. You have to go ahead. Okay. Wait a minute. Between item four and five.
Ah, yes.
Everybody get a chance to sign in on...
Public comment.
She could sign in. She could.
You can have your say, oh yeah.
Watch him, he's kind of...
See, five minutes, I won't be so then I can.
He's the sergeant. You're in line with me either.
I know. See, it already started.
Okay, six thirty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, evergreen, and justice for all.
Changes or additions to the agenda. I've had one suggestion for a change to the agenda, and that is to move item 11B, special board recognition, to between items four and five. Okay, so that way, Bob, can you get out of here?
Should he just so desire it?
Should he just so desire it. Or he can move to one of the other places out in the audience, should he so desire it. So if I could add a motion regarding that?
I'll move that we move item 11B to between item four and five.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second to move item 11B to between items four and five of the agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Any other changes or additions to the agenda? All right, item four, consent agenda?
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented. Add as modifies.
I second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now you're in the 11B.
11B, well, I was gonna scoot on down a ways. I don't know, is it favorable? May I actually turn off that?
Yes.
I want Bob to see the fine detail.
Oh, look at that.
So, I've been busy looking for pictures.
Oh, what is this over here?
That's my favorite one. But we'll start at the top.
Okay.
So, as chairman of the board, obviously Bob has served as chairman for many years. He gets the fine distinction of the great lung, it seems, March graduation, and the presenting of the ponies, which you can see example of that over on the right. Bob also does other things for our district that many times go behind the scenes. If you've looked at the practice field lately, obviously, that really turned out nicely. And part of the reason of that is that big Volvo machine you see in the back. So it pays to know some people with equipment who are very generous and giving people. So Bob had that machine at the school at least two times on that project. And it's amazing what quick work that made of that project. But we really appreciate that Bob was able to get that there and help us out with that. On the bottom left, that was an interesting day. Truck came in to bring some dirt to the baseball field and was advised that probably a big truck like that might get stuck. But I thought it would work anyway, and it didn't. And so, we were trying to whack down different trucks that would go by. I'm like, oh, I know someone. So called Bob, and he once again came to the rescue and finally got that truck out of there. It doesn't look very deep, but it was just so slick and it just moved not much. So, I want to thank Bob for bailing us out there too. And the bottom right is actually the picture of the dirt bike days at my grandpa Duffy's. I mean, clean my mom's house and my grandpa Duffy's there, and that's my brother's Honda XR75. I knew I had that around in our old slides, so I had to actually got a slide converter figured out. That just cracks me up, bringing me back to days of you and your brother and my uncles and terrorizing the neighborhoods. I thought that would be a good one to show, put a flashback there. But also, we wanted to recognize you. You've been on the board a long time. It goes clear back to 2001. You had to term then, came back on the appointment in 2010, elected in 2011, and then finished out the last four years. So when you add it all up, that's a long time. And I think, what, five or six of those years maybe were chair? Maybe even longer?
Yeah, probably.
And so, with the help of my friend Jim Motten, who has bought some plaques, we wanted to give you this plaque, uh, read it to you. Says, "Appreciation for serving in ASL Brais River Valley School District Board of Directors. Robert Torca is presented with this recognition for his dedication and leadership to the district. It takes a certain kind of leader to serve the district community and students while maintaining a balance and understanding that change takes time." And this phrase to me is probably the most significant of all. It says, "For anyone can lead when the seas are calm." You know, when you're in the role of board chair, you, you know... I shouldn't be saying this, we aren't going to be asking for volunteers for that position a little later, but, you know, you... You know, it's like kind of being the president. You know, you're... There's still a five-member board, but you tend to, you know, carry the load and the burden, I guess, too. And when it's time for credit, usually the superintendent gets that. But when it's time for, you know, the tough times, the board chair is really in the, I don't wanna say limelight, but line of fire. So, I appreciate the leadership that you've brought to the district over the years. Not that many people stay in service, you know, positions that long, and so just wanted to recognize you for that. Thank you for your shift. See if you can go there.
Oh.
Yeah, so...
Still depressed, right? He is kind of depressed today.
He is depressed.
About five minutes. All right. All right. Perfect.
I would actually like to, for about a minute or so, address the board if I could, just a second. And I... One thing I would like to say is that I truly have appreciated the opportunity to serve on the board. I've learned a lot about governing, a lot about myself, a lot about dealing with people. The first time on the board, we went through some real rough patch. The board was really dysfunctional, I mean, seriously dysfunctional. That was a really trying time. I almost quit several times, practically everything. Managed to get through that, and then wanted to coach. I always kind of wanted to coach, so I resigned about six months or so before my term was up and coached. Came back on the board, when the board was in kind of a legal situation that was really kind of ugly, and right away all of a sudden they decided that I needed to be the chairman, so I got to deal with all that. And then got to deal with the whole superintendent thing. That was very trying. You never really fully appreciate what a chairman goes through until you actually have to do something like that. There's nothing easy about it. So, learned a lot, really appreciate the opportunity to... I've all, you know, I've always admired the people that take time out of their life to do this job. Really, the first time I went to a board meeting was when I was probably about 20 years old. I thought, I will never do that. No way. You know, and then as time goes on and you get involved and your kids are in, and you sort of get pulled into it, and it's important to you. And the school has always been very important to me. I think that, you know, early on, my dad instilled that in me, and then my years that I spent with Lyle Patterson really instilled that in me. And, you know, I think to probably give back just a little bit, I sort of felt like I, you know, needed to do something to give back to the community and the kids. So I've always had the idea that as a board member, we always make... There's tough decisions that have to be made. I've been through quite a few of them in the past few years. I mean, I was part of the board when we closed the Rossford School. I was part of the board when we brought in CVA, changed immersion, had to deal with the superintendent, deal twice actually, because I was on the board the first time when we brought Gerald in. So, and I'm sure I'm missing something, but... So there's been some real tough things, but the important thing is, is don't, as a board member, don't be afraid to speak your mind, okay? Because that's why you're here. Don't be afraid. There's not a question that's too silly, or you think it might be dumb, or maybe you don't quite know something and you think, well, I should maybe know that, but you don't know that until you ask the question. So make sure that you make yourself up to date on what's going on, and don't be afraid to stand up for what you believe in, because it takes five people. What really is a shame is when one or two people seem to end up being sort of the leaders and you don't get much help from maybe two or three or something like that. So I would advise that everyone at least take a shot at that chairman's job, because you get a full feel of what it's like, what Chuck has gone through through the last year or so, what I went through for four or five years at least, and get an idea of what it's really all about. You really, you don't deal with nearly as much just as a board member. Correct, Chuck?
Yeah. There's a...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so... Anyway, just wanted to, that was my little piece to you guys. I appreciate you guys running for the board. It was a tough decision for me not to. You sort of get involved, but I'd kind of like to move on and do something else maybe now. So, anyway, that's it. That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. We're cheers. I think I'm done now, right?
You say so.
Thank you.
One, two, item... Gotta get a part of them. By me. Swear in newly elected board members.
Well, just why do you have everyone stand up and raise their right hands?
The left off.
I will start the aye, and then you guys can do the rest. Are we ready?
No.
Oh, nice half there, Rob.
I'm representing the paper.
You're the paper.
Momentarily.
Well, maybe we should have Buddy move, that might go there.
Buddy was raised.
He should be a little closer too.
Oh, do I have to do something?
I don't know.
All right, just say aye.
Now I have to figure out how to use the camera. Hey, you're gonna have to oogle in a little bit.
You better get your elbows on the...
He told me he had anti-shake.
Ready?
Yep. Ready?
Aye.
I swear to God, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and its Constitution of the State of Washington, and will faithfully discharge the duties of this director of ASL Brais River Valley School District under 155 Pacific County, State of Washington to the best of my ability.
Excellent.
Yeah.
So we have a picture.
We do.
Yeah, I don't like this. Don't throw that away.
Well, that's funny too. Well, I said I wouldn't come back, and I came back a second time.
Yeah, we're gonna, just a minute probably for anyone, right?
Because you were making sure Nick has a name.
All right. Onto item 5B, elect or renew board member positions. And the first position we have to consider is chair. Are there nominations for the opposite chair?
Well, I move the board to appoint Chuck Hendrickson as the chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded to appoint Chuck Hendrickson as chair. Are there other nominations? Okay.
It'll take time.
Are there other nominations? As this requires a roll call vote, we'll start with Lonnie. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bud?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think the name you moved on there.
Okay. Next, item vice chair. Is there a nomination for vice chair?
I move, we appoint Nick as vice chair.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second that.
All right, been moved in seconded to appoint Nick Nicola as vice chair. Is there another nomination? Apparently not.
Nick's it.
All right. Again, a roll call vote is required. Lonnie?
Aye.
Bud?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. Motion carries. Okay. Last position we have here is WIPA representative. That's a position that Bob has held. Do we have a nomination for that position?
I move the board to appoint Lonnie.
Is there a second?
A second.
There are ones, been moved in seconded to appoint Lonnie as WIPA representative. Is there another nomination? Okay, this one does not require a roll call vote, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6A, personnel, acknowledge resignation Ken Eaton as volleyball coach and open gym supervisor.
I move the board acknowledge the resignation of Kim Eaton as head volleyball coach and open gym supervisor.
A second. It's been moved in seconded to acknowledge the resignation of Kim Eaton as head volleyball coach and open gym supervisor. Is there any discussion?
I would just comment. Kim's been the coach, I believe she started in 2000, so committed 15 years to the program of coaching volleyball. She's done open gym volleyball for years, and back-to-back trips to the state tournament, so put in a lot of work, have a good program going, she's obviously leading a team in good hands, but we'd just like to thank her for her service and commitment.
Any other discussion? It's kind of like what Bob said about, you know, the board. Yes, coaches do get paid, but they put a lot more into it than what they represent. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? Anyone? Bob?
I had good choices, chairman by the way. And vice. And the athletic isn't much, you know, in fact, I'm not sure what your duties are, Lonnie. You might want to research that one. But every board has to have one, correct?
All right. Item 8A, adopt policy 2029, animals in schools.
That's actually one we visited last month. That was a very short one. If there are no questions, I will break it up on this break.
Right? Well, can I take a motion now?
I move the board to adopt policy 2029, animals in school. Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve policy 2029, animals in schools. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, item 9A, approved purchase of replacement computer equipment for vocational program and teachers not to exceed $19,500. I move the board approve the purchase of replacement computers for the vocational program and teachers not to exceed $19,500.
A second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the purchase of replacement computers for vocational program and teachers not to exceed $19,500. Discussion?
Is that a grant? Any grant funding of that?
That is not, that's general.
No, it's just...
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, principal staff request.
We don't have much in that realm tonight, so I'll just jump on in mine. Briefly, enrollment report. Been holding very steady. The K flow's run a little bit. CVA's leveled off over the last couple of months. Camp's holding, remember, our camp number for the year was seven. So it's good news to be on the upside of that rather than the downside. In fact, we've had the last meeting, Alan reported at that time, 85 kids. Every day, the enrollment number's a little bit different, but we have added a couple extra periods onto teachers' days so that we can kind of get through this bulk of population and then see how it goes. So we've committed to those teachers through the semester, which we'll look at again in January. Doesn't really alter their contract status or anything, they just basically work their an extra hour day off of the pension.
Now, these are FTEs?
Those are FTEs.
Funded FTEs.
Status reports. Again, there are two parts. I... What I've done is I've added an extra column here, so it's a little easier to track by the month. So kept the old information and then added November. You can kind of see the, where the highlight of the line on that go, so where we've ended each month. So right now, our ending fund balance is $1,084,353. We did drop a little bit from the previous month, and as you know, it does rise and fall. But the significant thing to note there is for November, we get 5.5% of our portion. And not every month is an equal percentage. So that's a low month, and we didn't drop that much. So, looking good there financially. Put a few just notes on the side, hopefully that helps. Where it's restricted revenue, obviously that's money we don't encumber, or we don't spend, or we don't attempt to spend. The minus 600 at the bottom, this is just basically a bookkeeping notation. Karen has a principal support fund for students who may have, you know, academic or clothing needs or things like that, of that nature. Well, the 600 was actually taken out of general fund of the county, and it should have come out of fund seven, which is the student success fund. So the minus 600 is just basically a note to us, letting us know that 600 that appears in general fund really isn't there to be spent, and that we didn't get cleaned up in time, so it won't exist next month. This is a breakdown of revenue coming in. So what we budgeted, the current just represents November, and then there are year-to-date totals. So we have a quarter of the year, basically. So you can kind of track over there where it says percentage year-to-date, how things are going from budgeted to actual. Just a reminder, again, in January, this will true up a little differently. Right now, we're getting revenues from the state based on budget, and in January, it will be based on actual. So we will see a spike there in the revenue because our FTE is above our budgeted amount. Still holding well on that. It's been a busy month with public record requests. The timeliness is interesting because I just, the previous month, completed a survey. I think it was WASA, which is the Washington Association of School Administrators, was gathering data on how much time schools are spending gathering, you know, information for public records requests. Well, prior to this month, it wasn't that significant, but the one you'll see at the number of letter C has been probably a day or more already worth of time. I'll talk about that one in a second. But we received three this month. The first one is for the teacher's contract. They ask for this every year because WASA is the school administrators. It's like kind of our representation or our union, sort of. Not really have a union, but they're always collecting those, so when schools start bargaining with their teachers' associations, they have access to everyone else's contract to see, well, what's their pay? How many extra days are they getting? What have been named for this? And what kind of agreements are there in the contracts? The second one, I guess there's two D's there. We have no clue what that means. We don't have any contracts with Kwong Tribe or the Jamestown Network, so that one was easy. Simply, we do not have any business with those. C, those of you that have been on the board a while may remember this one. It's been over a year and a half ago. We got a public records request for student handbooks, bus rules, ridership rules, all-around bus. And of course, when you get these record requests, attorneys, they don't tell you anything. You just have to go digging and provide what you can. Now, the same law office sent a public records request for any assaults or physical altercations or physical contact on our school buses since 2003. That took a while, because when you print off behavioral data, it's not always sorted by bus. So then you have to go through and sort by bus. Then you have to sort by physical contact, because it could be cutting the bus seat, littering, hanging hands out the window, you know, all kinds of, you know, bus infractions. Then you have to sort and find by physical contact. Then you have to go back to the attorney and say, well, do you need names? Because you have to subpoena me, I cannot give you names because of the FERBO, which is, you know, the Protection Act. And they said they didn't need names, so it made it a little easier, but then of course we had to go redact everything because we didn't send names. So it took...
Are those handwritten records or is it a computer?
They're computerized, but they come from someone else's handwritten write-ups, you know. So I have a feeling we probably haven't seen the end of this, but I, you know, I don't get information on what I'm really after. So we're, that's been...
Do we charge for that?
We don't. We can charge, you know, postage or copy fees, but if you send electronically, you know, we can probably charge...
I heard you said you used the whole day, but...
Yeah, it took at least a day, because I, a lot of my time, it took some of her time, it took a lot of Sherry's time, go through and print and sort, and then you have her further sort.
What is the reimbursement structure? Is it per document or is it a per hour?
Now you can get it per page, like if, or the postage, but usually all these people want it electronically, so it's kind of hard to track, because there's no fee to, you know, scan and send it electronically over email.
Right, but if you paid one sheet, but you spent a whole day in charge of $2...
I don't think, at this point, I've seen any structure that allows reimbursement for time, but they do talk a lot about postage. But I do believe the legislature will attempt to do something about this, because they're in the process of doing a study right now, trying to gather all this information, how much time we're spending. I'd like to go back and find that survey monkey and do it all over again, because, yeah. I mean, you want to go through your whole database for 12 years, and, you know, legally, seven years, or six or seven years, no, excuse me. No, there's a records retention schedule, so some things are three years, some things are six years, some things are seven years, or it says a timeline, or until the matter is resolved. Well, we think when we issue discipline for a bus situation, it's resolved, you know, so that vagary there leaves it a little open to, how much should we keep? And the more you keep, the more you, you know, have to comb through.
What did you say their retention period is?
Well, it varies, but I think student discipline is three years. Some are six, some are seven, some are ninety-nine or a hundred years, whether it's a transcript versus a behavioral write-up versus...
But I mean, like these, if they fell outside the limitations, couldn't you just say that they fell outside the...
Right, yeah, we didn't have one that went that far back, so I didn't really worry about it. I figured I'd save that if, you know, gets requested, I'll say, oh, RCW, whatever.
Any idea what other school districts do?
For how long is...
As far as reimbursements?
Um, you know, I haven't really talked about it. I was thinking about calling Ocean Beach to see if they've been, the same information has been requested. Because I thought, well, maybe I could narrow it down.
Because it could get abusive.
Yeah, and that's why they're studying it now, because a lot of schools have said, like, for a small school like this, you know, we don't have a public records department or a communications officer that handles this kind of, you know, correspondence. It's me and the secretary that happens to, you know, first one I see, hey, can you help? Moving right along, I guess we do have a financial audit coming up. It will be for the last three school years. It's scheduled to take place sometime end of January, early February. Most of it won't be on-site, most likely. They will coordinate their schedule with one of our business managers here, but we can expect a bill for that, probably eight thousand and one. I think it might have been Nick or Bud, one of you guys who was in the session at WASA with Patty Wood, was talking about, she was talking about audits and she said, and you will get a bill for this? Because that was a surprise, you know, like when I started, I didn't know, we had to pay for that.
Pretty good, so it's biddle, biddle.
It's pretty significant chunk of money. And last year, a couple of years ago, we had two different audits, it was about sixteen thousand. So, in Florida, over time, we need to set aside a good chunk of money in the budget for audits because you could get hit with two or three at a time for a year. Oh, there we go. Oh, it kind of looks like it belongs on the tombstone, huh? I don't know if I like the looks of that, but anyway.
You notice how it's changed now that I'm over here? Well, I could, but...
Oh, I just also learned to thank the fire department for allowing us to be here. I came here probably a couple of weeks ago and Val was here too and Nick and showed me around, showed me how to use everything, you know, they have it nice and warm for us and the wifi, so it's great.
For the facility?
Yeah, it is nice, it's good to see it. That's probably it for me.
That's good for you, so we're down to board member reports on future agenda items. Anybody?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, we went to the WASA and this is the third time I've been to WASA. We really don't have anything formally set to talk about if we learned anything or brought anything back, so I'd kind of like, maybe every year, to have some sort of discussion about what happened at WASA. One thing that I'd see just from my personal standpoint, you know, there's a board calendar that would be kind of nice, that has just stuff pertaining to the board, you know, budgets or whatever. There's probably a half a dozen things that I can think of that could be on the calendar just for the boards besides our meetings and I thought that would be kind of nice. But, you know, there's lots of stuff that we partake in and this is our opportunity to discuss those things, whether it's still fresh in our mind and... So, I guess I'd kind of like to see that as a formal part of our after-WASA meetings.
You know, but I actually have a board calendar. If you, if you got some things from the meeting, Amy, could you send me those and I could add them to mine and then send it all back out? Kind of a timeline of when we do what.
Okay. Is it online someplace?
No, I just have it in Excel, but I refer to it every month to kind of see, okay, where are we, what's coming up? And then as we do a new thing, we put it on there, oh, in January, we did this last year. So, yeah, I can share that out if you have something, you've got, you know, put back, put on it. Yeah, I'll try to do that.
Okay, do you have any thoughts?
I'd just like to throw out a quick recognition to the, to our sports teams, to the football team, the volleyball team, both made it to state, you know, into the state playoffs, just, you know, and, and I think for a couple of years now, we've, we've done that, you know, and I think the kids, you know, you can see, really see them, you know, fighting for everything that they, you know, they're really putting effort out there for everything that they're doing. And, and I think that's building from us dropping down to where we actually can compete with everybody. And, and, you know, just, you know, shout out to the programs that are, you know, being successful and I think it's because, you know, we moved down, obviously, and the kids are picking up on, on the success and I think, I think it's really helping out the kids.
They get hungry when they get there.
Yeah. Give them something to... Giving the younger ones something to look forward to also, I think.
Chuck, if I may, you know, it's a very good point because, you know, when we were debating on one B, two B, you know, that was my whole intent to start with, was get the kids in a prospectation they can compete in. And, you know, it, it's just healthy for the whole school, you know, the morale's up. It seems to me, seems like the spirit's up. It's just a win-win when the kids aren't getting beat by, you know, quite a bit, especially about the boys.
We were even ahead of the curve there on some of the changes, you know, like Toledo moving back down and Laca moving back down. So, we, we got ahead of the era.
It was interesting, I did have one superintendent nearby contact me and he said, how did you get your board to move down? Because this person wants to move down. And he just said, the board of the community are not ready for that. I said, well, it really wasn't a struggle, we want to win and put our kids in the best chance to be competitive.
You know, I think one thing that's really important there is that it's not for the parents, it's not for the teachers, it's not for the community, it's for the kids. And that's when you really start making the right decisions, is when you start thinking about the kids. Not because it's convenient, because it is much more difficult to travel, it's more difficult, correct? But it's worth it in the long run because every one of us that has played in high school sports, that's one thing that you just cannot take. Not many of us get to play in college. I think Lonnie probably got to, but there's not many of them from NACEL that get to play in college, so high school's kind of it. And it's just one thing you just can't take away from those kids, they forget that experience. It's pretty neat.
Are we going to see a facility report in January?
I'm hoping, but I think it's going to be a little bit, we're digging in pretty heavy and there's a lot of things. Originally, we were targeting like, I was, March. But, yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're going to be ready yet. There's a lot of column and checking and pricing and... I mean, we might have something, but as far as like a four-year, five-year plan, I think that'd get those stretched. Knocking on January three, it seems like.
Sure does.
Our next meeting is the first day back. Our next facility.
Facility.
Yeah, not the next one.
If I may, make one more comment. One thing to keep in mind is that the harvests in Pacific County are at an all-time high right now for past quite a few years.
For timber.
Yeah, and it's unfortunate that it didn't work out the last time because if we would have gotten that done and front-loaded those bonds, the taxpayers would have hardly paid anything. And I think that that's really important. The harvest is still going to be pretty good for several years because Pacific County really is kind of ripe now, you might say. County has come back really well. One thing to really keep in mind, to really get out to the people, and, and I have no problem helping in any way I can as far as, you know, committee or just getting some phone calls out or whatever, because it is very important to our community, to our kids mostly, but, but it really would take that tax burden off by front-holding those and letting the tax dollars from the timber money pay a big portion of that.
Okay, do you have any else? Entertain motion to adjourn.
I move the board to adjourn the meeting.
A second? And moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We adjourn.